Welcome, everybody. It's good to see you all here on this beautiful afternoon. My name is Josh Sladek. I'm one of our three county commissioners. Today, we're going to do something pretty special, and that's that we're going to run a city council meeting and a county commissioner meeting concurrently. That means we are going to go back and forth, and it might feel a little clunky. I apologize in advance for that, but that's just so we can do two meetings at once as opposed to doing one and then doing another. So, my part is part of our...
What was it?
There's our no worries. You said you could basically get it right on top. So to do my part to open the county meeting, I'm going to call our meeting to order. This is a joint public hearing specifically about Marshall Mountain and open space and the open space bond.
Excellent, and I will call the city council meeting, the special public, uh, special city council meeting to order, and go to our city clerk, ready Raybine for roll call.
Okay. The city of Missouri, President Paul Smothers, D.C. Anderson. President, Mayor Tercera. President, Daniel Parlino. John Conkos.
Here.
C.R. Farmer. Gwen Jones. President. Preston Jordan. President. My community. President. Jennifer Stoudamire.
Present.
Amber Sherrill. President. Sandra Basika. President. Heidi West. We have a tour. We have eleven council members present and their guests.
Thank you, Ms. Raybine. I'll pass it back to the commissioner.
All right. So as part of our culture in doing our public meetings, we begin with a pledge, so please join me in the pledge.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. To the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, my nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We would also like to acknowledge that this meeting takes place on the aboriginal territories of the Salishin-Cowlsville people. Before we dive in, are there any public announcements? And I know we have one from our Cheryl.
Where's Cheryl?
There you are. Please announce away.
Hello, everyone. If you are joining us for this meeting virtually today, instructions for printing on closed captioning are on the screen. If you are joining us in person, you will have closed captioning on the screen here in the living room. There will be opportunities to speak during the meeting for a public comment virtually. And in person, we ask that all speakers today speak slowly and clearly. This helps with the accuracy of closed captioning. If you are on Microsoft Teams, if you would like to speak when discussion has been opened for a public comment, we ask that you use the raise hand feature. This is a small hand bucket. If you are calling in on the phone, you will need to get started by to raise your hand. If you have any questions, please find me during the meeting and let me know. Thank you.
Thanks. Do we have any other public announcements? Okay, do we have any public comment on items not on the agenda? Okay, then we are going to open this hearing on Marshall Mountain.
Uh, the city will open the public hearing after the staff presentation, but we can go, we can go to our staff for the, um, public presentation to start.
Good afternoon. Is this on?
I don't think so. Is that better?
Um, let's definitely try. Is there anything we can drop these lights in front of the screen? I'm not sure. I'll try. Well. I can't tell exactly what it is. Looking at.
Yeah, that's better. Thank you.
Well, good afternoon, city council, mayor, county commissioners. My name is Kaylee Becker. I am the Missoula County Open Lands Project Manager. And as we all know, this is a joint hearing between the City of Missoula and Missoula County. And the hearing, the focus of the hearing is a request for open space bond funding to support the potential purchase of four hundred and eighty acres in Marshall Canyon. And as a reminder to everybody, the open space bond funding, it comes from count, two countywide open space bonds that were approved by voters in two thousand and six and two thousand and eighteen for open space conservation to be spent in line with the goal stated in the ballot language. So I will hand it over to other staff today. We'll, um, have a few different people presenting, myself, Chet Crowser, Donna Gockler, and Zach Covington. So, thank you so much.
Thank you, Kaylee. My name is Donna Gockler. I'm the Director of City of Missoula Parks and Recreation. And I want to thank, uh, city council and county commissioners for having this hearing. And I particularly want to thank those, um, individuals, property owners over Missoula's history who have left us a legacy and opportunities for access to public lands. This project is truly a joint project. I've been working for the City of Missoula since nineteen ninety-one. There are few projects that are truly legacy projects, generational, and make the kinds of change these kinds of opportunities make. It's a joint project in every way, uh, due diligence, uh, early on through the years in, uh, in acquisition opportunities, in the way we look at managing for the future. And through this process of, uh, sharing, uh, information, doing engagement, listening, you, uh, hopefully will learn this evening the immense amount of support for this project, and again, the importance of it for generations to come. With the project, the county would ultimately own and provide the comprehensive management for Marshall Mountain Park. The city desires this, uh, acquisition in a significant ways. It relates to our recreation programs. Many of you may not know that for, um, the community of Missoula, City of Missoula Parks and Recreation provides day service, day childcare services, albeit unlicensed, for about one-third of all elementary kids in the valley. We don't have enough places to take these kids. This is a huge capacity and equity issue for the city. We also have been working extensively with partner groups, like every major project in Missoula County and Missoula City, nothing's possible without grassroots efforts and sweat equity and cash from our partners and other funders. So why now? Like every open space project, I'm guessing I'm supposed to actually move my own slide. Like every open space project, it's opportunistic. And this one in particular, uh, we have looked at this as a city multiple times since its closure at the beginning of the century, multiple times. And there was never a time when so many things aligned to make this possible. And while every acquisition does not happen at the ideal time, it happens in time, and every great idea lives to see its time. We have an opportunity to protect perpetual, um, public access, to recognize the importance of public open spaces to public health and safety, to preserve sensitive natural areas and wildlife habitat. We have an opportunity to meet our growing, uh, population demands. We know that we are a climate destination. We saw that through the pandemic, and we will continue to see that. We know that we want more housing and places for people to live, but we want those where there are services, network costs more to provide the housing than the housing is able to contribute back to the community. We want to address community needs, and I shared with you already the importance of youth program services and learn, uh, learn to play skills. Sometimes we, we downsize the importance and the value of play, but it's through play that we grow community and that kids actually grow all those skills that they need to be thriving adults. We know from the two thousand and eighteen Pro Survey and just about every survey I've seen, whether it's at the state level in the state of Montana, the county level or the local level, one thing that our residents seem to be able to agree on is we like access to public lands, we like natural areas, we like dirt, and we like dirt trails, and we like to hike and bike and play on those trails, go birding and all those different things. And this is an opportunity to meet many of those goals. We want to continue to maintain quality of life, uh, for our residents. One of the great challenges in a growing community, in a growing county, is how do we preserve what makes this place special? Can Missoula County and city be the governments that make it all happen for its residents? This area has a wonderful backcountry feel. If you have not had opportunity to hike it, it's a, it's a great place for huckleberries and wildlife and bear grass and the things we just don't have on many of our open space lands. It's also got terrain that we need, that we don't have in other places, that allow for mountain-based recreation, so it's a front-country experience. And it comes with all kinds of amenities like parking, uh, believe it or not, one of our greatest challenges with most of our other open space acquisitions. We address community needs. It's a place that's very much, um, aimed at multi-generational opportunities. This is, uh, one of the projects, um, that, albeit it, it's not a historic, um, district like Fort Missoula or the downtown, it's a historic landscape. This landscape has been used for generations long before white Europeans arrived on the site, and it's been used for generations, even for a full generation, even since it closed, thanks to the partnership with the current owners. We've had significant public engagement. Uh, of course, Engage Missoula was huge with over twenty thousand visits, but I think more important, there were sixty different public meetings. That's six zero. We've, uh, applied the Pro Survey. We've looked at all of the, uh, responses, and what we're seeing is yes, there is strong emphasis and, and a very loud supportive community of, of mountain bikers, and we acknowledge that. Uh, but what's interesting about that is we're also hearing from sledders and sliders and wildlife viewers and cross-country skiers and racers, uh, trail runners, bird watchers, uh, the importance of the Forest Service connections, the ability to have public events, the ability to have a wedding on the site, and so it's not a singular place. And just a little bit of background on why we're hearing from certain audiences, because of the terrain, because of the trails that were created by Missoula Mountain Bike under Five Valleys ownership of the midsection of the mountain, and keep in mind, we're looking at all three pieces of the mountain right now. This became, uh, the mountain bikers place, just like Fort Missoula is to soccer and, Big Sky Park and, um, Playfair are to baseball, and Splash Montana is to swimmers. And so it shouldn't be unusual or surprising to us that we're going to hear an overabundance of enthusiasm from a certain group, because we hear that on every single project. What's cool about this project is that those trails are also accessible for snowshoeing, hiking, and every other way that we all recreate in the mountains. And so with that, um, I wanted to just touch a little bit on our joint, um, efforts with county and city. And, uh, the city has, um, spent resources. Uh, city council members have been asking. Certainly, we've been involved in the public process and outreach. We've been in the, uh, involved in the design process, and it's only fair to give a shout out to Margaret Valiant and, um, Nathan McLeod for their efforts. But, um, we've also been heavily engaged with Missoula County, and what I want to assure the council members is in fiscal year twenty-four and in the fiscal year twenty-three, we were using funds that were already existing from the Conservation and Stewardship Mill Levy and providing the minimum level of maintenance to keep the place safe, accessible, and usable. And those, I can't kid you that at some point you do need money when you buy more land, but projects like this are significantly less than highly developed projects, and I'm going to encourage everybody in this room to think about the importance of generational investments and, and the few opportunities in this environment that avail themselves to actually acquire land to address our growth challenges. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Chet Crowser.
Thank you, Donna. Good afternoon, commissioners, Mr. Mayor, and members of city council. I'm going to advance the slides here just a little bit. We may have missed one. So this touches on what Donna had covered in terms of some of the public engagement and some of those multiple different types of interests and, and community members we've heard from in terms of recreational opportunities. Uh, and then forward to some of the cost considerations that Donna started to touch on here. So, um, for the record, my name is Chet Crowser. I'm the Chief Lands and Communities Officer for Missoula County, and, uh, I'm really pleased to be here today. This proposal marks really a major shift in the county's approach to meeting the recreation needs of our communities, both urban and rural throughout the county. And it also, I think, marks, uh, opportunity to mature the relationship that we have with our city parks partners, um, as we move forward collectively to meet the broader needs of our, our community. So this is, uh, a really kind of an exciting, uh, thing to talk to you about today. I also want to just recognize the immense amount of work that staff have undertaken along the way, uh, both from the city and the county side, as well as the many community partners who have either committed time and/or other resources to, uh, help us bring this proposal here today. Uh, so to jump into a little bit of what the operational cost considerations will be for an acquisition like this, uh, which in a way is getting a little bit ahead of ourselves because the primary focus of today is acquisition, uh, bond funding, uh, but you can't help but think about those costs, um, that will be incurred if there was a decision to acquire a piece of property. This slide gives you a sense of where Marshall fits and some of the other examples here in our community. On the left, you'll see the City of Missoula Conservation Lands Program and about five thousand acres there, a per acre cost of two hundred and seventeen dollars per acre. Um, that's about one point oh eight million annually that the costs, uh, costs associated with management of those lands. Moving to the right, Marshall Mountain Park, um, right at the four hundred and eighty acre estimated, eight hundred and eighty-three dollar per acre figure, uh, puts a number at comprehensive management, meaning everything's up and running, not necessarily to full build-out in what you might have seen in the conceptual master plan, but at least being able to attend to the, the needs that are there, have the administrative oversight, the day-to-day management, all of those things that come with running a recreation facility, um, again, at about that eight hundred and eighty-three dollar per acre figure. And then contrasting that with a much more developed recreational amenity, um, with Fort Missoula, and there you're looking at about hundred and fifty-eight, fifty-six, rather, acres and a four thousand six hundred and five dollar per acre figure, and that is about seven hundred and eighteen thousand dollars per year in terms of annual management costs. We'll dive in here a little bit to more specifically, uh, what we anticipate over the coming fiscal years. Uh, and really, we recognize that starting, that from the very beginning with acquisition of a property is going to take us a while to ramp up to full operating mode. Our focus initially would be on those essential safety and public access issues. And so in FY twenty-four, the county has approved in their budget process so far, a one hundred and five thousand dollar new commitment of funding that would go toward this effort, um, should we move forward with acquisition and a decision to take on ownership and management, which is the proposal currently. Um, the city, which I think Donna mentioned, um, is going to be able to commit a similar or equivalent resource contribution that is in line with what they have been doing on site to provide access over the past year and a half through the lease agreement that is in place with the existing landowner. Moving forward, we expect from FY twenty-four through FY twenty-six that there'll be a transition, uh, increase of need to provide services, likely an increase in visitation and use, uh, as well as, as, as implement, or development is implemented and other infrastructure becomes in place, uh, that those numbers would increase somewhere between what would be a total, uh, FY twenty-four initial budget amount or estimated budget, budget amount of two hundred and ten thousand to into FY twenty-six, again, toward more comprehensive management at somewhere in the neighborhood of four hundred and twenty-four thousand annually. And that goes back to the slide that I just presented in terms of what we're projecting currently. Um, in between through FY twenty-five, there's a placeholder number there of about three hundred and twenty, and that, of course, is dependent upon sort of the levels of development and use and progression along the way.
Yeah, I wonder, the, um, presentation that they are putting up here is not the presentation that's attached to this agenda item, and I'm wondering if you can, for those of us who, you know, have a hard time seeing that far away, um, if we could give that email to council and commissioners.
Absolutely. Is there anything I can correct or add to what you're seeing that looks different up here?
No, which is the presentation that is attached to the agenda item, for those of us following along, is not the presentation that you're walking us through right now.
Okay.
It is the, the one that we're looking at that's attached to today's committee meeting agenda item is dated August thirtieth, and this is October fourth, and the slides do not match up. We don't have any of these slides in the presentation attached to the agenda. We got you.
Certainly. Apologies for not having, uh, something you can follow along with, but we'll make sure that we get the updated version to you. Uh, so I'll briefly touch on where we are in process today and then hand it off to our, uh, staff that have been working on more of the acquisition phase of this project. This, as we've mentioned, is an ongoing county-city partnership, and, uh, there have been a number of steps along the way, both from city and county, to move this through the process. This has gone to, uh, the Open Lands Committee and Open Space Advisory Committees, which Kaylee and Zach will talk more about, also to the City Parks and Recreation Board and County Parks and Trail Board, uh, and they have supported the acquisition of conceptual master plan and development of an interlocal agreement for management. Um, and then we have following steps post-this meeting, uh, should there be a decision to move forward that would take then decisions to both the city and to the county commissioners regarding an interlocal and, uh, and finalization of a Marshall Mountain conceptual master plan. Uh, and then, again, stepping beyond that point, uh, should that process be successful, uh, we would be considering, well, the public access component and Marshall Mountain being brought into public access somewhere in early twenty twenty-four. So that's the rough timeline that we're looking at. And with that, I'll hand it over to, I believe, Kaylee, to take us into the next slides.
Thank you so much, and we are working on sending that presentation out soon, should we're actively. Okay. So, I'm not going to spend a lot of time on this slide because I think a lot of the great content here about the desired improvements and supported actions related to what Donna, um, referred to as the Post Survey, the Parks, Recreation, Open Space, and Trail Survey that was done in twenty eighteen, which was a statistically, um, done, there's a word for that, I'm blanking on it, um, statistically valid, thank you, um, survey that was done countywide in twenty eighteen. Um, what I will highlight on this slide is just that question that was asked in the survey about purchasing lands at Marshall Mountain for biking, hiking, and skiing, and as you can see, seventy-one percent somewhat or strongly agreed with that statement.
Can we ask questions all the way?
You know?
We're going to have questions as soon as these are done, but you can call them, uh, staff back up. We should be, we should be there at three thirty.
I just wanted to know how the survey participants, not me.
We will, we'll get you that at three thirty.
Thank you. Um, so just highlighting really here that the project has, has been identified as a priority. It's something that has been talked about in the community for many years, as it does really hold a strong connection to our history, to our landscape, and to our greater community. So, speaking of that, um, that connection to this land, one of the reasons this site has been identified as important is due to its cultural significance. So, uh, this map was made by the Confederated Salishin-Kootenay Cultural Committee, and it shows significant place names throughout our valley. And of note, one of these traditional place names is associated with Marshall Mountain, so it's identified as a landmark on this map, signifying the importance of Marshall Mountain culturally to the CSKT. And I want to just, um, use this opportunity as well to bring in an aspect of the project that we understand is very important. This is a very important opportunity to partner with the Confederated and Salish Kootenay Tribe, and the Board of County Commissioners and staff have met with the full tribal council, um, on both virtual meetings, as well as many of them have been able to go out and see the site and have expressed support for the project, and also, um, strong interest in pursuing a partnership, um, if the county is to acquire this property. Oh, I jumped ahead too fast. So I'm not going to go too in-depth on all the recreation uses. I think Donna did a really great job of covering that, but what I will highlight here is just some of the history of the site, that over the years, the predominant uses did shift to recreation. Some of those recreation uses go back to the nineteen twenties with backcountry skiing, and then through the operation of that, um, commercial ski area, Marshall Mountain, that ended in two thousand and three. I think the community efforts behind this project are really important to highlight in that after the ski area closed, it was open to the broader public by the existing private, the, both previous and current private landowners, and it was open to the broader public, um, in twenty twenty-one through partnership with the city and Izzy Dog, one of the landowners, as well as Five Valleys Land Trust. And through all of that, it really has, as you could hear, um, become a very popular site for community, and inclusivity has always been a really key part of that, um, use at the site. And in addition to those pieces, as Donna highlighted, it's an important opportunity to secure access to adjacent lands, and with that understanding that adjacent lands largely are public and managed by the U.S. Forest Service, and in many cases, the capacity to host programs and events is capped by special use permits, and those are very limited. So that offers greater capacity with a public acquisition of Marshall Mountain. So to go over some of the natural resource, resource benefits, um, they are many, but I'm going to try to be, um, succinct about this. So it's a very diverse habitat. It includes upland forest, wetland, and riparian areas. Thirteen different species have been identified, which are identified as, um, either threatened and endangered or species of concern, have ranges in the area, and some of those species are shown on this slide. As I mentioned, the project area, in, project area includes important aquatic resources. Um, it contains a significant portion of Marshall Creek, which is a tributary to the Clarkport River, and it contains most of the headwaters of this creek, which is very important because that is a very, very productive fishery for a species of concern, west, uh, west slope cutthroat trout, and it is, um, it is able to host a genetically pure strain, uh, population of that species. So, there are many other things I could go into on the resource benefits, but just noting that it's diverse supports a lot of wildlife habitat and, um, diverse forest and wetland types. So kind of building on that piece about natural resources, I think it's important to understand not both, not just what is on site, but how these lands connect to the greater landscape, as that is a really key part of connectivity when we think about wildlife habitat, and it connects to a block of public land stretching from Marshall Mountain all the way to Glacier National Park that is adjacent to multiple wilderness areas. And that is important from that wildlife habitat standpoint, connectivity, but it's also an important piece when you think about recreation and connection to those existing recreation amenities such as the Rattlesnake Recreation Area. So, to zoom in a little bit on the project context and discuss some of the current ownership and the transaction piece of it, um, so the three, the four hundred and eighty acres is comprised of three separate parcels, each approximately one hundred and sixty acres. Each is owned by a different entity, and this, just to call out the Marshall Mountain Ski Area, it operated on two of these parcels, Izzy Dog Property and the Five Valleys Land Trust Parcel. So, for the Five Valleys, the parcel is currently owned by Five Valleys. Um, that was actually originally purchased by the Nature Conservancy in two thousand and eight as part of the Montana Legacy Project, and then it was transferred to Five Valleys Land Trust in two thousand and fifteen. And then Izzy Dog purchased the property in two thousand and twenty-one, and the Conservation Fund purchased their property in April two thousand and three. And I highlight that just to make it clear that each landowner really had an opportunity here to step into the key time to conserve these parcels. So, to go over project budget, I realize, um, that's a lot of information on a small slide, so I will, um, try to help explain it a little bit. So this just shows project costs. In the blue table, it breaks down cost by different items, and so I want to call out that that estimated land acquisition isn't just that, it's an estimate. We do not have final appraisals for a, any of the properties, so that is an estimated amount. The other items really relate primarily to due diligence and transaction costs, all very standard, to bring the total to roughly, a little over three point eight million, three million eight hundred and eighty-two thousand. And for those, that final item of the costs to open the site to the public, the six hundred thousand, that is further detailed in that green table, and so those items are ones that came out of the conceptual master plan as being priorities for getting the site safe for the public, and also some of the basic accessibility and infrastructure that will be needed to open it fully to the public. And those items, I think visually are laid out a little bit better on this slide, which is from the conceptual master plan, so you can see some of the trail connectivity, some of the, um, work that is going to be done at the base area. And then finally, getting to that proposed budget, so this is the funding table for, um, the different sources we have secured so far. As you can see, we have committed funding from a variety of sources. One very important one is that eight hundred One very important one is that 875,000 in-kind contribution from landowners. So that is because two of the landowners are selling their, are, have agreed to sell their parcels at well below what market value would be. So that's why, as I said before, we give an estimate of that full land value, but because the properties aren't being sold at the low market value, any change in appraised value would only affect the in-kind. I hope that makes sense. And then in addition to that, we have secured grants from the Conservation Alliance, the Environmental Protection Agency, and we have contributions from the Friends of Missoula Parks. And as you can see, the final remaining items to get to full funding for this project is the requested 1 million from city share of open space bond and 1 million from the county. Okay, I am going to hand it to Zach. Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Kaylee. I think many of you have seen this slide before, and we've talked about this quite a bit, but as part of, part of the open space acquisition process, and in letting projects for open space bonds, we also look at compliance and alignment with open space bond language and current plans and a number of other things. So I just wanted to kind of touch on this a little bit for you. The top column there is open space bond purposes, and we just very simply put some check marks on there, just to let you know that we're looking at that for every single one of these projects. It definitely meets all those points and aligns with those purposes. The second column is 2019 Missoula Urban Area Open Space Plan, and it likewise kind of aligns, well, not kind of, it definitely aligns with those purposes. And that was a publicly vetted plan adopted by the city and county. Wanted to just kind of review really quick where this project is located as part of that 2019 Urban Area Open Space Plan. There were cornerstones, open space cornerstones that were updated, and this project is part of one of those cornerstones in Marshall Canyon, Mount Jumbo and Marshall Canyon, open space cornerstone. And cornerstones are loosely defined as land and water resources of high open space value. They're based on community input, development patterns, related documents, and spatial data sets. This map also shows in the orange boundary, the Missoula Planning Region boundary, and believe it's to Potomac Valley on the other side, and on the left side of the screen is what's within the Missoula Planning Area. On the right side is that other planning area. The county has these planning areas to designate which open space bond funds are used for which areas. So we, in the Missoula Planning Region, that for our interlocal agreement with county, that allows us to spend money and to allocate funds for projects within that planning area. And any projects, again, per the interlocal agreement, any projects that are close to those boundaries can be joint city and county projects, and so that's one of the reasons why we started talking about this, and we're now moving forward with this as a joint city county project. Just to kind of go over a few other things related to alignment with policy programs and objectives of various planning processes, various policies and plans, the project also aligns really well with city ordinances, and I've got open space types up there, the second from the left column, and that shows how this project kind of aligns with those types. The next is open space values per city ordinance, 12.56 ordinance is the open space chapter. And there's also, second from the right, is the Montana Code Annotated, and that's how the project aligns with state code. And then 2023 City Missoula Strategic Goals on the right side column shows how this project aligns with those city strategic goals. Again, this is partially from a city perspective, but this is also very applicable to the county. The city has three strategic decision-making lenses, climate and resiliency, equity and housing. And so we definitely wanted to take a look from the city side, how that, how that applied, how this project applies. There's a lot of implications for climate and resiliency, protecting forest resources, guiding development away from sensitive areas, and from the wildland urban interface, protecting sensitive water and wildlife habitat resources, and having a regional forest and mountain-based recreation parks so close to Missoula, so people don't have to drive as far to access some of these resources. Likewise, if protected under public ownership, the project also provides the opportunity for people of all ages, genders, ethnicities, abilities, and incomes to enjoy outdoor recreation close to home, with universally accessible trails planned for the base property and potential for continued and expanded recreation programs, including much-needed out-of-school care for children. The project provides a place for everyone to enjoy the outdoors. From a housing perspective, we know that housing equals population, as housing increases, so does population. And as Donna touched on, local residents, as I've been learning, as I'm fairly new to the city and the area, residents of the city and county love their outdoor spaces, they love their recreational amenities, and something like this, like Marshall Mountain so close to the city core and populated areas, is really unique. And I would say not just from a Missoula perspective, but I, you know, with a lot of the work I've done in the past in other Rocky Mountain communities, mostly in northern Utah, to me, this seems extremely unique, a very rare opportunity. This also helps to potentially guide development away from Marshall Mountain and allows for, you know, higher concentration of development in other areas, which is definitely worth This is just kind of a quick review of open space bond processes and steps. In July, as you know, the city open space advisory committee and county open lands committee both recommended the expenditure, or recommended to you all, the expenditure of funds for purchasing Marshall Mountain. And we want to thank OSAC and LLC and the chairs and the members for all the hard work they put into those meetings and those decisions. They looked at this from a very technical perspective and a very, I think, they had some great conversations, is what I'll say. They debated very extensively, and they came together to make those votes on both We're currently meeting here tonight, of course, at this public hearing to discuss the decision on potentially funding public acquisition of Marshall Mountain using open space bond funds, the second, second point there. And then in the future, of course, the county will need to kind of bet that process of ownership through more public meetings and public process. Okay, I think we'd, we'd like to thank all of the committed landowners, project partners that made this opportunity possible. Without them, we would not likely be having this conversation. We'd like to thank all of you for your time and effort, and all the, all the reading, learning, questions, and everything else that you've been bringing forward to help us be able to present this in the best way for you, and we've had some great conversations. Okay, I think we also wanted to touch on real quick, go back to this slide, but Kaylee, I think we wanted to touch a little bit on our, some of the public info we've had recently, and just from the city perspective, between late September and early October, we had 55 emails from the public to the council, all positive towards Marshall Mountain. Just wanted to mention really briefly some of the neighborhoods represented are, neighborhoods and areas, I should say, River Road, Canyon Creek, Orange Street, Second Street West, Lewis and Clark University District, Franklin and Fort, Rattlesnake, East Missoula, 39th Street, Rose Park, 44 Ranch, and Prospect Meadows. And I thought it was really interesting that the youngest person to make comments was 13 years old, and it was kind of a neat comment to read, mentioned that they had been looking forward to public acquisition of Marshall Mountain for years. I don't know how many years, but I thought that was pretty, pretty fun, pretty interesting. And I'll let Kaylee talk about the county.
Yes, thank you. We realize there's a lot of public wants to comment, so briefly, I just want to make sure that everybody knows the public comments that were received by Missoula County, and that was as of noon today. So between September 26th and October 4th noon, the total number of public comments the county received was 108. All were in support. Not everybody noted where they were from, but just to highlight for those that did know where they were from, we did have representation from East Missoula, Lolo, West Riverside, the Bitterroot, Target Range, and Houson. In addition, I just want to quickly list, because while we received those public comments, in addition, we also had letters of support submitted from a number of different organizations, and that included the Lolo National Forest, Backcountry Horsemen of Missoula, Backcountry Hunters and Anglers, Mountain Bike Missoula, Five Valleys Land Trust, Missoula Mammoths, Friends of Two Rivers, Montana Fish Wildlife and Parks, Five Valleys Audubon Society, Montana Backcountry Alliance, Missoula Nordic Ski Club, the Conservation Fund, Trown Unlimited, and the Watershed Education Network. And of note, we also had a letter of support from the immediate neighbor, basically in holding within the Izzy Dog parcel as well, who's supportive of the project. Thank you so much.
So, thank you, Kaylee.
Yes.
So as individuals, we each got, also got some letters, and I don't think that found it, found their way through your, through the portal you're mentioning and weren't counted, but I want to acknowledge, we got plenty of letters saying this wasn't a good idea as well.
Good to know, thank you.
Just want to make sure and say that out loud.
Thank you so much.
Thanks. And thanks for the great presentation. Thank you, Zach and Chet. So now we're going to open up for questions from city council, and look, somebody's calling in with questions. It's amazing, isn't it? So we're going to open this up to city council and BCC for questions, and because the city council is more than three times bigger than the county commissioners, my friend, the mayor, is going to facilitate this next time.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any questions? Anyone, Ms. Jordan, would you like to up one? And the view is a little odd here, so if you just raise your hand and I'll plug in a list going into their questions. Ms. Jordan?
So my original question was, how many survey participants were there? We had it in percentages, but I was wondering how many were.
It took me a moment, fine, but I found it on the web. Random sampling of 7,000 homes received 672 usable responses. The results were weighted to reflect the population as a whole at the time, sampling area of 4.2 for a 95% confidence level.
Ms. Vasika?
I was trying to ask them all.
Sure.
Do these open space bonds expire? We don't use that issue, but it's. Do they expire at all?
The.
Loaded question.
So open space bonds, and I may need to turn this over to a financial person rather than myself, but the bonds themselves don't expire. But once the bonds have been sold, it is, our goal is to actually spend them. That's the best business venture we could, could lead, and also, once the voter has voted, what we try to do is honor what they voted.
Okay, thank you. I just have a couple more. I noticed that the management cost projections continually go upward. Are they projected to continue to increase in years 2027 to 2028, until we get our, you know?
Yes, it would, you'd expect that at least at an inflationary level, that we would see continued costs with garbage and other sorts of services provide those needs. In some cases, and in fact, as many as possible, we'll look at some of the trail development and other sorts of projects in somewhat of an opportunistic fashion, so where there aren't grants available or other funding sources that are external, we can use those and hopefully offset some of that trajectory, but we would expect at least at an inflationary level, we would see increases.
Okay, thank you. There, let's see here, this is the purchase to, this is to purchase the Izzy Dog parcel. There were two other parcels, so if this Izzy Dog parcel is not acquired, are there no other ways to access those other two parcels?
This is for all three parcels today?
For all three parcels? Okay, thank you. And then last one, I didn't see a question on the survey that asked, should we acquire Marshall Mountain? Did I just miss that question?
Didn't I look exactly in the background information how that was asked, but what I do, what I can share with you is at the time, our partners in conservation were working on the 2018 bond, the primary messages were about protecting Dean Stone, Marshall Mountain, and restoration of the Clarkport River. Those were the three leading projects. And so I, you may be right, I didn't look exactly how the question was asked in 2018.
Okay, I'm all.
So Heather Anderson, hold it there, Ms. Sarah?
Thanks so much. I, the question I have, I have a couple, is the increase of cost from '24 to '25 to '26 really is reflective of as we continue to build it out to full scale of what is imagined within the plan that was presented? And so the increase from like $100,000 from '25 to '26 would not be a reasonable estimate to go from '26 to '27. Once you get to 2026, the hope is that it's that full build out, and then it's just maintain, you know, a cost, inflationary cost from that, but the jumps will not be as significant.
I, I think that that is a, I think that's a reasonable conclusion. I want to, just to make sure everybody understands, the estimated costs are based on a conceptual master plan that was completed with SE Group, who specializes in recreating mountain-based recreation where skiing because of weather and climate is no longer a possibility. And so the cost we estimated is at a, early on, what we're really looking at is, keep in mind, mid-mountain was held by Five Valleys Land Trust for some time. The Izzy Dog parcel is the base, where the lawn and the buildings are. Right now, we don't have trails all the way down to the base. It's actually quite a feat if you're not fit. And so our main goals in these early phases are to get trails that are more accessible for all user groups, and so the cost will only go up incrementally as development happens. The other thing that council and commissioners will always have before them is the ability to approve future capital or future increases or not.
And then the campaign in 2018 that was put towards the voters highlighted the purchase of Marshall Mountain. It just is not until this juncture right now that we're able to actually, you know, put the whole project together.
That is correct. I mentioned when we were opening up, the session is, since Marshall Mountain closed, there have been numerous really diligent efforts to protect the mountain, and this came together very much thanks to Five Valleys Land Trust and to the Izzy Dog Partnership, and then finally, the Conservation Fund. And so without them, this opportunity would not be here.
And final question is, in the 2018 bond, the city's portion was 7.5 million of the 15 million that voters cast. If we expend this million-dollar bond fund, how, and all the others expenditures we've made up to this point in time, that, what does that mean in our portion of the?
So far, of what's been approved for expenditure, or from the 7.5 million as you described, if we expend the million here or commit to expending it, we would have 5.2 million left in the 2018 open space bond. Some of you may not recall, but we actually have 648,000 in an anonymous trust for this kind of work, and we still have 100,000 left in the 2006. So that brings us to a grand total of just short of $6 million, if you will, that has already been prior approved for these kinds of projects.
Ms. Sarah and Ms. Shum.
Thank you. Donna, I don't know if this question is for you or for me, but in this project budget slide, you mentioned that the land cost is not finalized. I just want to clarify and make sure that if, if those numbers change, that doesn't mean that the bond amount will change, you would not come back to say it's 1, it's 1.2%?
Yes, you're completely correct. So if those appraised values come in lower than we expect, it would just decrease that in-kind contribution from the landowners that are doing that, and it, we would not be coming back, we would not need to come back and for a second ask. Yep.
My next question is from Donna.
My next question is, Donna, to name us for this is going to come out of our stewardship levy. Can you, and we get, can you, can you talk about how much money will you bring in from that levy? I know it's a function of mills, but I just want to make sure that our constituents understand that there is that money set aside for specific purposes, and some of that money is going to be used for this.
That is correct, and I, I may not have the exact numbers off the top of my head, but when the Conservation and Stewardship Mill Levy was approved in 2018, it was for four mills, which I believe a mill at the time in the city was about $150,000. So, at least half a million dollars. And, and through time, just like all other taxes and appraised value of properties, that has increased slightly. One of the key things related to the Conservation and Stewardship Mill Levy, though, is that we have been setting aside about 10 to 15% of that each year in a reserve fund for major projects in our future, knowing that at some time, an open space bond is going to go away. We, when that was approved in 2018, and Morgan can probably provide you a lot more detail than I can, because he actually manages that fund under his program, we have since added multiple properties and not asked for increases because of the Conservation and Stewardship Mill Levy. Those include properties like the Bluebird and all of Dean Stone, for example. There's others. And so, we've done really well. I think Morgan's done a fantastic job of ma-managing that for maximum benefit, partnership, and grant match opportunity. With this project, because we're adding 480 acres at one time, and over time, the amount of recreation taking place on this, it is, it will, it will cost something. The good part about this, and in my opinion, for all of the Confluence communities and all of the communities across the county, is that this is an opportunity for, for high levels of use, access to the backcountry, and a shared cost for other acquisitions in the city of Van Hall City.
Thank you. I just wanted to see that I, you provided me with a lot of numbers, I know about a lot of questions. I just think it's important for me to understand how all the funding pieces come together. I appreciate it.
Okay, Ms. Cheryl next, and then Ms. Cheryl.
Yeah. First, I want to, okay, I want to answer my colleague's question. You know, I, having read the polling results from the 2018 open space bond, and having run that bond, we did ask about ownership on purchasing, that was a different group of people that we polled, and that polled very high. The bond language, while it did include specific projects, it did include language that would include this project specifically because this project polled quite high back then. My question for you is, with regard to childcare and the programs that the city's running, could you, could you give us a number of kids and families?
I could. This is Meg Witcher.
Am I stealing your thunder here?
Arts and Recreation Program Leader extraordinaire, and Meg, why don't you go ahead?
I was going to tell you guys a little story. This is my 10-year anniversary of working for the city of Missoula. Thank you. 10 years ago, I came to this position, and I looked around at all this beautiful public land, and I looked at Blue Mountain, and Paddy Canyon, and the Rattlesnake, and I said, I can't wait to get kids and families there. Turns out, I couldn't. 10 years ago, I approached the original landowner of Marshall Mountain and said, hey, Bruce, I need a place to bring kids. And he said, come. That was 10 years ago, before this was even anything, because I have this many permits in blue to take kids for year-round recreation. Okay? 10 years ago, we saw in our after-school programs, 10 to 15 kids a day. 10 years ago, we saw 201 kids a summer. Today, through an initiative with the Community Schools model, and our partnership with MCPS, 21st Century Grant Funding, and a wonderful general fund allocation, we now see 90 to 109 kids a day at Lowell, 40 to 55 kids at Franklin, we just started 14 at CS Porter, and 23 to 57 a day in after-school programs. Every one of your wards is represented. Summer camps, we're, we're up to 309, 3,966 children in week-long camps, 1,279 kids in day-to-day camps, and 176 kids from the International Rescue Committee come and spend summer with us. Every last one of your wards is represented. Every last one of the far stretches of Missoula County is represented. And I can guarantee you that I, myself, have brought a child or a family to Marshall Mountain represented by every last one of your wards in the last 10 years. It is vital. I have done my job in the last 10 years in creating access to childcare and out-of-school areas for our families, and I'm asking you to give me the place to bring them.
So I appreciate the enthusiasm, and the anniversary is applause-worthy. We have a rule that we don't applaud if we don't boo, and that's, we don't applaud because we don't boo. And so, and so I want everyone to just keep that in mind, and maintain a, a slightly more calm demeanor. But thank you for, thank you for your service.
Call a question?
We also have waiting lists for our camps, is that true?
Yes, we have, we have requests for anywhere from 30 to 50% more slots than all the numbers that Meg already shared with you. So we, we could envision with enough time doubling that overall program, but that will take some time, because quality is number one.
Do you know that the cost of our camps for families in the summer, I mean, we never talk about this model, I'm sure you talk about childcare all the time, so the cost of our camps in comparison to the cost of childcare, you know, I mean, kind of our numbers, you know it's a lot less.
On a, for a typical, a typical camp for a child is probably approaching the cost of a typical 10-hour day for you to have daycare. So you get five days for one. We also scholarship programs, and I think that's really important. We do have sliding scale fees. And, and we also work really hard to meet the challenges, because the barriers aren't the same for everybody. Sometimes it's transportation, sometimes it's acceptance, sometimes it's language, sometimes it's money, and sometimes it's all of those things. So that is why we meet specifically with organizations, individuals, who are looking for those services, so that everybody has access to a program that helps them thrive.
Commissioner. So Chet, I was going to ask a question. So I received multiple letters and one phone call that said, you're putting the cart before the horse, and that's typically how people describe my behavior, so I didn't take it as much of a Marshall Mountain thing. But I ran into, it was more, it was more about Marshall Mount, saying, how, how can you guys contemplate purchasing this land when you haven't dealt with all the myriad issues associated with managing it? That's what I see now.
Yep, thanks, Sasha. I'm happy you're not asking me to comment on your behavior.
Thank you.
So, I think the answer to that in some ways is bureaucratic, that we have a process that we need to follow. For us to consider what those implications of ownership would look like, it's helpful for us to know that there's support and follow-through to actually get that acquisition visa accomplished. And I think, especially given the involvement of our many boards, both on the city and the county side, who've invested their time and input in providing recommendations, we'd be doing a, a huge disservice, as well as a disservice to the public, to jump ahead in that process. So, we see this as being the first step in deciding whether or not funding would be allocated for acquisition. At the same time, staff are working on preparing to be able to answer those next questions, so that we can be timely in doing so, but that's, that's the process that we need to follow.
Is acquisition time-sensitive?
You know, I think there's, as we've worked with the partners and the existing landowners, you know, they, they've got time and money invested in this project, and I think that time is incredibly important to them. They've also been incredibly gracious in working with us on helping our timely timeline be somewhat fluid. And I think moving quickly, though, to a decision will help them, will help our communities, and help us in preparing for what we need to do into the future.
Any additional questions from council members or commissioners? All right. Seeing none, we will open the city public hearing, and I'll give a brief description of that, and then turn it over to commissioners to open their hearing. And we just ask that you keep your comments to three minutes or less, that you keep them kind and respectful, and that you keep them on topic. If someone else said what you were thinking, you're welcome to say that you agreed with someone else, and we'll prioritize folks in the room first, followed by folks online.
Thanks. At the county, we're used to longer comments with plenty of insults, so please, we're sticking with the three minutes as well, and please be kind, and also, given that we are hoping to be done at 5 o'clock, and it's a full room, if somebody said something and you just want to echo that, please, don't. Just let, let other folks talk who haven't yet expressed the message, message that's been put out there in the world. We also are going to lead with youth. We have some kids in the room, and we want to make sure they get the chance to speak. So we're going to start with kids, and go from there.
Hi, my name is Green Dammy. I ride for the Missoula Mammoths, and yeah. Marshall's many things. It's a place to ski, a place to ride your bike, a place to hike, a place to connect with nature, wildlife, and community. I am a part of the Missoula Mammoths, a local mountain bike team for middle school, high school ages, age kids. Marshall's with the Missoula Mammoths is a special place with unique trails, and to help us grow our skills, both descending and climbing. Marshall is a great place where our whole team can practice together and have tons of fun. Our team has a sense of stewardship towards Marshall Mountain, and we know firsthand the community assets this place for all types of users, user groups.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Ada Linton, and I'm 14 years old. Marshall Mountain is one of my favorite places in Missoula, and I have been going there ever since I can remember. Marshall is an amazing place to do lots of things like ski, run, hike, bike, huckleberry thing, see amazing views, and wildlife. I have seen bears, snakes, birds, and have made many memories there that have shaped who I am. I hope to see Marshall Mountain continue to be used, as its base, people can get outdoors with their bodies and make amazing memories like I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello? My name is Kai Prince. I'm 12. So earlier this summer, I was at a Crook's Recreation Camp called Snowball, and we were doing hiking. One of those destinations was Marshall. I know that it's very, very important for mountain bikers and hikers alike, because it's, the trails are very, very nice there. And we did some huckleberry picking, and I think it's just very important for the youth and generations of mountains to come to enjoy that place. Thank you.
Anybody else? Come on up.
Since nobody else, Ken Brown, and with the Backcountry Horsemen, we support the purchase of Marshall Mountain, and as some of you may know, the Big Sky Horse Park is also a similar type facility, but for horses. And so, the mountain bike folks should get theirs. One of the things the Big Sky Horse Park has done, they've paid for all their expenses all the time they've been there. So I think there, there's a practical experience of showing that whatever expenses may come up, that there's some avenues to, to pay for those. Thank you.
I'm Meg Fisher, and I live in the Rose Park neighborhood. What you may not know about me is I also only have one leg. I'm also a doctor of physical therapy. I've also represented Team USA around the world at 12 world championships in athletics, cycling, and I owe it all to the community here in Missoula. I used to be a tennis player, so I, this is, this is my home. And as a doctor of physical therapy, one thing that's well-known is that movement is medicine. Period. The best treatment for arthritis is movement. Better than any passive treatment like ibuprofen, or ice, or massage, it's movement. And what does Marshall Mountain allow for all of us to do? It's a place for us to play, AKA move. And movement needs to be played. And what the, everyone is here to do is, is allowing our children to play, allowing our adults to play, allowing people of all abilities. And yes, it is a, mountain biking is emphasized. However, what is a bike? It is a tool for mobility. When you watch the NFL, what's on the sidelines? A bike. What's in every physical therapy clinic? A bike. What is a wheelchair? Well, it's a hand-powered wheeled machine. They can also come in powered machines, they can also come as unicycles, they can come as tricycles, they can come as quadricycles. You name it. A bike is a tool for empowerment. It's a, it's a place where we can redefine our abilities for ourselves and those around us. I wouldn't be here today for, well, really, this community and the power of the bicycle. I'm lucky that I get to walk today. I also have two wheelchairs at home, and I use crutches every day. I'm really lucky. And so, this ability that we all have, I think we often take for granted, and please do, take it for granted. However, we need to also have these places that we don't take for granted, and the abilities that we don't take for granted, and let's not take for granted the opportunity we have here.
So I'm going to start using this just to keep us on track.
My name is Steve Gaskill. I'm a retired professor at UN, and also a former U.S. EDP coach. I just want to talk about youth physical activity, because we've heard that from a great, you know, presentation from Donna, from Meg, who were a national champion. I mean, Meg Fisher was one of my students at one point. She won't admit that. I can talk for three hours, I'll keep it to a couple of minutes. Youth physical activity, I gave all of you a little handout that looks like this. You can keep that, look at it, this is a really cool thing. We measured 1,100 kids in Missoula schools for physical activity. They drop from 159 minutes of watered activity in elementary school to, ooh, only 35 minutes in high school, and you adults, you need more minutes, more minutes, 24 minutes. We need physical activity. That sheet that you have, I have that sheet with everybody on some, shows that adding 28 minutes of physical activity in high school is equal to one full grade point. Adding 18 minutes is 32 percentile points on their standardized test, between the least active and the most active. This is cognition. We also know it's good for health, it's good for ADHD, it's good for all the things that help kids learn, it's good for all of you that aren't moving that are sitting here, and I'm in a dance, I'm doing, if you all stood up for 10 minutes, you would vote for this. Yeah. We need places where physical activity is possible. I've done everything out of Marshall Mountain, I've backcountry skied, I've mountain biked, I've hiked, I've picked huckleberries, I've slid off the side of the hill on my cross-country skis coming downhill. It's a fabulous place. We need it. We need it because Meg Fisher can bike there, Meg Witcher can take hundreds of kids there, our Nordic Ski Club can take big groups, we can't do that anywhere else. It's a fabulous place, and the time is now, just like it was for Mount Snowball. It's time for Mount Snowball. So if anybody wants a copy of this, I will leave a copy up here at the stable. Thank you.
Thanks.
Good afternoon, councilors, commissioners, Mayor Hess, thank you for hearing our comments. My name is James Crosby, and I would ask you to support the acquisition of Marshall Mountain, because the best time to plant a tree is 20 years ago. The second-best time is today. And in our grasp are 480 acres of trees, much older than 20 And in our grasp are 480 acres of trees much older than 20 years. This property is a habitat for bears much more suitable than Front Street. Anyone's had the chance to meet those bears. It's monks for our city, and it's a place to rest your eyes while you're sitting in the ever-growing traffic of Broadway and Russell and Reserve. Marshall Mountain is a place that is what Missoula has always been. And 20 years from now, we need to be able to tell people that this is what Missoula has always been, instead of yet another thing to say, "Boy, you should have seen it when." So, yes, Marshall Mountain is a place for East Missoula to get extreme. And yeah, a great place for mountain bikers. I had the experience of my very first mountain bike race back in June for the Marshall Mullet Classic. And while my legs and lungs were burning at the top of the mountain, I found a puffball mushroom the size of a football. It's a place for recreation, but it's also a place for foraging, and it's a place to keep animals and the habitat that is special to Missoula alive and well. Please support this acquisition to protect the gem of Marshall Mountain. Thank you.
Good afternoon, commissioners, councilmembers, and Mr. Mayor. My name is John Stegmeier. I'm with Mountain Bike Missoula. We're a local trail building, trail access and maintenance advocacy group here in Missoula. We've been building and maintaining trail around Missoula since 2010. Some of our recent projects include the House of Sky Trail on Mount Bean Stone, the Wallman Trail reroute, and the Rattlesnake. And soon to open a very exciting jump line for all of you folks and the Rattlesnake. Just want to begin real quickly and say, we really do, as a stakeholder and a partner in this process, appreciate the work from the county and city colleagues. They've exhausted themselves doing a really extensive public process, went to great lengths to be inclusive and bring in people, and then keep the conversations, keep the focus on equity, inclusivity throughout the conversations. As you've heard, there are some passionate mountain bikers out there. They're in this room. I'm one of them. And they've done a great job in saying, "Hold on a second. This isn't just about mountain biking. There's a lot of other values here from conservation on through programs." Without a doubt, it's an important site to us as mountain bikers, as our sport. We've been really fortunate in recent years to have partnered with Five Valleys Land Trust to develop both multi-use and bike-specific trails on the site. And since then, we've held maintenance agreements to maintain trails, pull noxious weeds, and thin ski runs. We're able to complete this work at greatly reduced cost because we harness our volunteer membership base. Going forward, we remain deeply committed as a partner to help with long-term stewardship at the park. We're also eager to contribute in making the park more physically accessible. You've heard about the challenges. That is true. Currently accessing the top of the mountain does require a lot of work. We want that to be more inclusive. That includes building trails with lower gradients and wider tread width to accommodate adaptive bikes. That's something we don't have anywhere in Missoula. In speaking with our members, friends, neighbors, I think what really comes back to me is about Marshall, what people really value at the core at the end of the day, besides their activities, their sports, it's the place that connects them to nature. We have sites around Missoula that do that. But this particular site has many unique appeals to it, namely, the ability, as Meg mentioned, to accommodate extensive youth programming. That's just not something our Forest Service sites have capacity to carry. As evidenced by the near miss a couple of years ago and us losing this, places like Marshall are becoming increasingly valuable, increasingly rare as we grow. At this time, I ask you to follow the recommendations from your citizen advisory boards, park boards, open lands committees, open space advisory committee, in allocating the requested open space bond funds to purchase Marshall Mountain. Thank you for your service to our community and consideration of my comments.
Hello, I'm Evie Sillenberg with Climate Smart Missoula, and I want to thank council, commissioners, and Mayor Hess, and just concur with all the gratitude that was provided to the previous speaker, to everyone that's pulled this forward. I just wanted to mention really quick that what's exciting about this to me and to Climate Smart is, you know, Marshall Mountain arguably is the first business that went, the first private business that went out of business due to climate change. They don't exist because we couldn't operate a ski lift that faced west as our temperatures warmed. So it's particularly maybe salient and important that we protect it for all the other myriad reasons. There's lots of information that was presented about climate resilience. But I also think just being close to town, sustainable transportation, there's a lot we could do to encourage that. There's a lot that already happens with the way youth programs access Marshall Mountain as a close-to-Missoula, you know, this gem that's close to Missoula. And there's a lot we can do with energy efficiency, renewable energies, the way that we manage that site that speaks to climate and kind of honors that original business that is no longer there. There's just a lot of other great things that we can do here. And I think it's really exciting that we can use open space bond for this purchase, so thank you.
Hi. Okay, hi. I'm Leah Story. I'm with the Manhattan Backcountry Lines. Backcountry skiing, as you all know, is important to a lot of people in this community. It's for no other reason than it's a way to get out of your house and above the fog in the winter. So it's a really important function. Backcountry skiing is also really intimidating and really dangerous. And it's hard to learn, especially for people who haven't grown up with it, who aren't already part of that community, there's a really high barrier of entry. That's especially the case in Missoula. You have to drive really far to get to backcountry skiing, often on really bad roads. The approaches are incredibly long and not especially fun. And most places you go backcountry skiing around here have considerable avalanche danger. Marshall is one of the only places that people can learn to backcountry ski. Whenever I meet somebody who says, "I want to learn to backcountry ski. I don't know how," I take them to Marshall. My seven-year-old skipped up to the top of Marshall this year. There's nowhere else I would do that. It's just an incredibly valuable resource to get people into a sport that's really important to so many people, the mirror to get them to be part of that community. Yeah, it really starts a function, but there's nothing else like it in terms of really letting people explore a new sport. So, yeah, thanks for your consideration.
Hello. My name is, oh, hello commissioners, councilors, Mayor Hess. Have to be both there. Okay. My name is Tricia Drobeck. I am the executive director of Run Wild Missoula. Our mission at Run Wild Missoula is to support runners and walkers of all ages, abilities, and backgrounds. I'm here to represent Run Wild Missoula staff, our board, and its nearly 1,900 members, as well as our trail stewardship arm, Montana Trail Crew. We support an investment in making sure Marshall Mountain remains a trail-based recreation area that is open to all. Marshall Mountain will support Missoula's growing interest in recreation and be an area to expand the type, variety, and amount of recreation we're going to need long into the future. And personally, I think we're going to need all the options we can get. We continue, we'll continue to push Friends of Marshall Mountain to include plans to have non-biking-specific trails at Marshall. And we won't dismiss a potential opportunity to have a glorious trail run or race on its beautiful landscape. Thank you.
Good afternoon. I'm Whitney, Director of Five Valleys Land Trust, Whitney Schwab. It's great to see all of you today and thank you for having us here. I want to also acknowledge just the Herculean effort that county and city staff have gone through over the past year-plus to help ensure that we're standing here today, frankly. The amount of due diligence they've done and the efforts they've made have been significant. But I want to just take a step back to acknowledge that Five Valleys Land Trust exists to help meet community needs, and obviously through the lens of conservation. And we've done that for many years, you know, as I think somebody mentioned Mount Jumbo earlier. That was a little project back in 1996 that has made our community a much better place. And here we stand today with the same opportunity around Marshall Mountain. But one detail I want to call to attention that may have been lost in Meg's incredible numbers is the access to permits for people to be able to get kids out in the landscape. And probably in 2010, 2011, or 2012 timeframe, we started to hear from partners about that lack of access and what could be possible for partners to be able to access lands when they're getting kind of phased out of being able to access more on Forest Service lands or other public service lands. I think it's a good indicator of how valuable those lands are to our quality of life here, our Montana way of life. And recognizing that access for kids is really critical, especially for kids, to be able to not only have the public health benefits that Steve spoke to, but to also learn how to be good stewards of place and good stewards of the quality of life that they'd like to continue to see in their lifetime. So at that time, Five Valleys took the effort to actually take on some long-term land ownership opportunities to be able to provide that opportunity for partners to use the landscape. And so we purchased 300 acres at the mouth of Rock Creek, which we managed for public access and open space. And I bring that up because we have multiple partners from the university, from the insectarium, from the Clinton Schools, to the bird lab, to partners at MPG Ranch that are putting over thousands of kids on that landscape every year. And that's happening because they can't access permits on other lands. And so in 2014, when Five Valleys had the opportunity to step in and recognizing that the future of Marshall was probably not going to reopen as a long-term ski resort, we recognized that the chance for kids to be able to use that place moving forward is significant, particularly in the face of the fact that there aren't a lot of opportunities on other public lands to that permitting process being maxed out. So it does provide a critical place, and we're happy to continue to support that however we can moving forward into the future. And just really appreciate your attention to this opportunity today. So thank you.
Hi, my name's Courtney Bauphok. I'm a former Olympic runner and a pretty invested member in the running community here in Missoula. But what I want to speak to is a lot of what people have already said is the moving and the connection and community that makes Missoula great. But specifically, since a lot of that is already said to Meg's programming, and talking about it more as a parent, and not even just for my kids, but for future generations of kids that don't normally have access to potentially mountain biking or running trails. They don't have parents that run. And all these amazing parents have exposed their kids to biking and to running. And so through the programming that can only happen at Marshall Mountain, hopefully, these kids will like, when they're adults, like, "Oh, I remember running on trails in Missoula, or at Marshall Mountain. So when I'm in college and everything's stressful, I'm going to go out for a run because I've done that before. Or I'm going to jump on a mountain bike because I know what I'm doing." And I feel confident doing that because of the programming from Parks and Rec. So I just wanted to speak to that. Thanks.
Hello. Thank you all for giving us this opportunity and listening to our comments. My name is John O'Connor. I'm a resident of Board Four here in Missoula. And I am speaking today on behalf of Friends of Missoula Parks. We're one of the stakeholders in this project. For full disclosure, I'm also on the Missoula Parks and Recreation Board. And I'm a member of the Conservation Lands Advisory Committee. So I've been involved in this project for a little while. One thing about Friends of Missoula Parks, our mission is to support the city of Missoula's parks mission, but also all parks, trails, and urban forestry in and around Missoula. And we have our own projects that we do. Those include things like Bearproof Cans in Greeno and Bridge Over the Rattlesnake. We also serve as fiscal sponsors for a lot of other projects. In the county right now, we're working with the Clinton Skate Park folks on that wonderful project. We really support compassionate and passionate individuals in and around Missoula who want to further the cause of outdoor recreation and protecting our valued spaces. I had the opportunity to go out to Marshall with the county's open lands committee, and we got to walk from the base around to what is now the Conservation Fund property. It is a magnificent piece of land. There's incredible educational opportunities out there for youth and adult alike. There are wonderful connectivity opportunities for existing Forest Service roads in and around Marshall area that will allow residents and hikers to have access to so much more space. As an example, I will tell you, I live on the south side of town, and what Mount Bean Stone has done for our side of town, giving folks access close to home to trails, has been incredible. And we'd love to see that opportunity out at Marshall. Thank you. We hope you'll support the project.
Hi, my name, my name is Jed Dennison, and I'm with Friends of Marshall Mountain. Keep Missoula weird. How many times have we seen that? How many times have we heard it? Keeping Missoula weird has a little bit different flavor for me, and especially for Friends of Marshall Mountain. Keep Missoula special. I came here over 25 years ago. I had one phone number. And within 15 minutes, I was in the Rattlesnake, and I knew I was home. One of my first jobs was with Bruce at Marshall when it was operating. The thing I remember most and the thing that was special were the kids' laughter pouring, pouring out of all the school buses. It was organized chaos, but it was joyous chaos. We fast-forward now. You've heard the young people talk about, you know, how they've had these great experiences. I've had great experiences with my kids up there. And when the opportunity arose for us to make this a public space, I jumped at it. This is a, Marshall is a touchstone for me. It's a touchstone for a lot of people. You talk to a lot of people in Missoula of a certain age, maybe with more hair than me. There is a place where they learn to ski. It is a place maybe where they had a lot of fun on a cold winter night, under the lights. It is a place that is special, and we need to keep it special. Friends of Marshall Mountain is committed to harness that excitement, to harness those memories, and to help contribute to the acquisition of this property. So in closing, I would like to say, let's keep Marshall weird. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Sukulane. I live in the Rattlesnake, and I want to speak as a permit holder for Marshall Mountain. I hold an outfitter permit. I'm a certified nature and forest therapy guide. And while I don't take kids to Marshall Mountain, I do take adults there on forest therapy walks and forest bathing. And this is my first year of having this business, and I just could not get a permit anywhere else that would allow me to bring this to the people of Missoula. And I've had people from Arlie and people from French Town and people who have learned to ski at Marshall Mountain and who hadn't been back since it closed. And it moved to tears. And it wasn't just sentimental. It was just the prospect of this being publicly accessible and having that connection to the land. And I had people who had recently moved to Missoula and felt kind of, or the area, I should say, and felt kind of lost and lonely. And they felt a connection to the land. And when we walked back to the parking lot, they said, "Now I feel home." And I really hope that I can continue to guide there for you.
Hello. Porter Hammond here. Anyway, okay, I'll just end up. All right. So a lot's been said already, you know. Oh, yeah, I live in the Rattlesnake, by the way. And I think a lot of you know, I ran Missoula Outdoor Running Adventures for 23 years. MOLA, just sold it. And like many folks, I go up there on a personal basis to ski and hike and bike and all those things. But I also saw it from a, you know, more special angle, being a, you know, somebody running programs for kids. We focused on outdoor activities for kids. And I wanted to make sure that you knew, Meg touched on it. There just, you know, I was a licensed outfitter. I dealt with BLM Forest Service. We were permitted on a bunch of different districts, the city, Montana State Parks, you know. And there just really is not a facility that's comparable to Marshall for staging events. And there just really is not a facility that's comparable to Marshall for staging events, whether it's for kids or adults. The parking, not the least of those concerns, but the facility, the ability to get out from under the weather, their bathrooms, and then the access to the trails right there, the proximity to Missoula. I know Bruce was kind enough to approach me probably 15 years ago, invited us to come up and use Marshall. It was a real game changer for us and we sent hundreds of kids there. We visited many times every summer. So when you look at the broader scale of things, as Meg was talking, trying to get a permit anywhere with any other agency, it's near impossible these days. And just the facility that Marshall represents, you know, I want to make sure you understand like how unique it is. There's just really nothing else like it. So when providers of programs, you know, for kids or for adults are looking for a place to stage these things that which are beneficial to our community, Marshall just presents this really wonderful, unique opportunity. So I will bear that in mind. Thank you very much.
Hello, my name is Rick Wishcamper. I'm one of the four members of Izzy LLC. The four members are, oh, the three members are here, Sandy Volkman, Pam Volkman, Rick Wishcamper. We just wanted to say to all of you that when we had the opportunity to purchase the parcel that we own out at the Marshall Mountain complex, it was immediately following the property falling out of contract with a private buyer. And we sat together and talked about our love for Missoula, talked about what a special place it was to have raised our kids and to live now in our retirement. And we looked at a number of things about Marshall, from going up there and seeing the kids biking with trailers, to biking events, to skiing, to adaptive use, and thought it was just a really reflective of the broader community and the things that are special about Missoula and how we all live here together. And those are the criteria that we use to underwrite our investment. And we hope that when you look at this project that you'll agree with our underwriting and that it's a wonderful way to spend our resources to maintaining the special nature of Missoula. Thank you very much.
We do, unless there's some other folks here who can offer something new and different. Jeff, you want to go? And after Jeff, we'll do, oh, we got a couple more.
Hi, Jeff Crouch. I'm representing Friends of Marshall Mountain. I wanted to just add something very quickly about the conservation efforts on this land. We've heard a lot about human use, which we think is critical, obviously. For those of you that may not know, the, there's a snowmaking old little pond at the base area. That constitutes a fish ladder, a fish barrier. All of the fish above that are genetically pure cutthroat trout. That represents, and Lad, we're going to try to make it Latin, no, technically.
I'm here.
Oh, then you can talk about that. I'm going to skip it because he's in front. The other thing I wanted to mention, just because it hadn't been mentioned, was that tonight, after this meeting, we're going to all go over to the Dram Shop to celebrate Marshall Mountain. Everybody's invited. And we are, we are committed to raising private dollars. We've already raised some, we've committed some for acquisition and an ongoing raising after that for improvements on this mountain. That's what our group is really in business for and that's what we're all dedicated to. We just started that this week publicly with a public phasing ask. We're selling the Pefto Bismo Historic Marshall Ski Lift Chairs off. So you can check us out online or come to Dram Shop. Thank you very much. And I'm glad you're here, Lad, because I was going to botch it.
Robert Dunlop, I live in Missoula. And you probably haven't heard what I'm about to say from anyone that has. But I do want to thank the current owners for the patience while it's stationed as being made on this property. I want to compliment the director and her staff at City Parks and Recreation for an excellent presentation that will serve well on expanding Parks and Recreation's empire. Now look at the number of people in this room that support this, the number of people that might not support it. How does that compare to the bigger population here in Missoula County and Missoula City? Every year, the city of Missoula, that I've gone to a budget meeting, Parks and Rec have let it be known that they're backlogged. Why do we want to dig another hole? Because the first one isn't deep enough. Don't add to her workload. There's really not much joint effort in this project if you stop to think who the taxpayers are. You've got the city of Missoula taxpayers that are also county taxpayers. And from the city's finance director, his best guess estimate is that 65% of the county's revenues come from the city taxpayer. I think if the county wants to pursue this Marshall Mountain thing, let the county pursue it. But the county itself should back off. For the mountain bikers and for the people that love the great outdoors, look what you currently have. You've got Blue Mountain, the Rattlesnake, Patty Canyon, hundreds of miles of BLM and Forest Service roads, and literally hundreds of thousands of acres that you can access. There is no need for the government to tell somebody they should get out and recreate. At my age, I bicycle here. I'm not having the government tell me to do it. Do it yourselves. You don't need some city park recreation person to do it. And I'm against this project. Am I still invited to the Dram Shop? Only if you buy.
My name is Bob Moore. I attend a lot of the meetings for the city council. I haven't been to anyone this big. I hope and pray that you listen to the gentleman who just preceded me. Excellent, excellent points. I would like to know, Josh, how many negatives have you received?
Half dozen. Say that. It's good.
I can appreciate you at least saying that you did receive some. I think it was 100, 200 for it. I am totally 1,000% opposed to this project. I was out sunning, going around the fields around the community hospital. Very, very few people were there. Very, very few. Go out there and walk. Totally opposed to spending this money. And I'll tell you, I think the citizens is beginning to have a clue about what the leaders are doing. Why did the citizens turn down the, I think it was 20 million bond going through the program? Why do you think they turned that thing? They're sick of the amount of money being paid to projects that people want. You've got some people who want to ski, go around, camp, whatever they want to do. And some people, they just don't want to pay for it. If you want to build a project at Marshall Mountain, you pay for it. Have a gate up there and you pay for it. I can't imagine the number of people I hear talking about, "Oh, I can't afford these taxes." Y'all, the careless, all want to be able to snow ski in the mountains, Marshall Mountains. Why do you think my mayor and the other mayor is running for it didn't get it too well? I guess it's them, the other ones now in competition with the Why do you think they didn't win? A lot of people in this city, in cities are saying it's enough. Enough is enough. I don't doubt the, well, I do doubt some, but generally, maybe it's a good place. They've actually gone up there since, you know, up there, it'd be a possible great city town. That was, that was nice. But there's a limit. There's a limit. As, every one of you and every one in this room should think about who's going to pay for this. I can't believe that you're making a presentation like this to this organization. You know what I'm saying? You haven't said anything about what it's going to cost. Not really. You don't want people to know what it's going to cost next year, next year, next year. What is it going to cost? Our former mayor said the legal fees was going to be about $400,000. It ended up being 14 million. So incompetent, or not necessarily incompetent, wanted to get what he wanted to get done. $400,000 becomes 14 million. I'd like to ask you, how much is this going to be? And who's going to pay for it? I'm totally, I really respect this gentleman. I thought I was going to be the only one that opposed this project. I oppose it with all my guts. You should not be putting these payments on many, many populations.
So my name is Brian Morgan. Thanks for having the hearing about this. I'm actually, I'm here to speak, I guess, about my support for it, for the economic vibrancy of our community. I was founded, one of Missoula's first remote companies 25 years ago. I grew it to about 40 employees that live here in Missoula. So I really feel the tax burden that we're, speaking of, that some people have concern about here. My employees have the same, they buy homes here, they have property taxes that go up. At the same time, the reason that I was able to grow this company here in Missoula was because I was able to attract an incredible workforce. A workforce that generally would only be found in urban settings. A workforce of IT professionals that were full-stack developers that were able to, that could have received, that could have been working somewhere else before COVID pushed us all fully remote. I was able to attract incredible salespeople, just incredible people in general. I've seen those people that have worked for me over the years enjoy the Parks and Rec experience with their kids and take advantage of that. And I can't tell you how beneficial that is for them living in this community to have the programs that Meg provides. I've experienced those with my own daughter and I've seen probably like two dozen kids of my employees, maybe more, go through those programs as well. So in my mind, yes, this does cost money. It will cost money moving forward in our community. But it is a well-worth investment that will return its value to us over and over and over again. And I think we've all seen the health wanted signs everywhere, especially in some of the retail shops or places where you can put a blue sign saying you're looking for somebody. But we also don't realize how, how our, some of our medical community, how they're struggling to attract people to Missoula. And having open space and having recreation activities, those are important for attracting that vibrant workforce. And if we don't have a vibrant workforce here, then we don't live here. Because we need people of working age here who can locate anywhere they want. We need them here. We need them raising families here. So in my mind, yes, this does cost money, but it is one of the best investments we can possibly make in our community.
My name is Elizabeth Ricky and I direct the outdoor program at the University of Montana. And I'm in full support of the acquisition of Marshall Mountain. It has given us lots of opportunities to take students who wouldn't otherwise be able to get into the outdoors quickly because of permit issues that we've already been discussing. And we are able to teach them inter, interdisciplinary, backcountry skiing, cross-country skiing, biking, and mountaineering courses as well. And so we've been able to teach a really wide, but Bruce has allowed us for years, that this would just really deepen the programming that we can offer. So, full support.
Commissioners, council members, mayor, Lad Nothick of Montana Fish, Water and Parks. I'm the 50th Manager Biologist, works in the Missoula area. I worked on Marshall Creek for 25 years. First, I'd like to thank all the staff from the Seaton County that busted their butts on this project. They really worked hard and I watched a lot. It wasn't much of a help, but they really put a lot of the information together and you guys know that. You know, in terms of Marshall Creek, it really is a unique place, you know, just for the sake of a different flavor here. That really is a unique cutthroat trout population up there. From Moyes Pond, the dam disconstruing the subject properties, from there upstream is a genetically pure cutthroat population. And so just in general, put it in context, if you fish the reach from the east of Missoula and down through Missoula, you've caught fish there. You've caught fish out of Marshall Creek. It's extremely productive. It's unbelievably productive. There's one fish, there's one juvenile fish per foot in that stream. In addition, we just finished the genetic testing up there in the upper end that's, that are on the subject properties. Those fish are genetically pure and they're diverse. We're going to be using that stock as part of the statewide root stock to stock a lot of the lakes and stuff around Missoula and other places in western Montana. It's very important. And so the other point I want to make was, I totally agree with the comments about it's tough to find places to bring kids to do aquatic education. My bend on it. But this is an excellent spot where we can do restoration work. It doesn't conflict with the recreational activities that are being proposed. And it's definitely an opportunity where you can bring kids to an accessible spot and do aquatic education. Maybe we'll have more fish squeezers in the future. Thanks.
All right, I'm just going to stretch because I'm a lot shorter than he is and I don't want to touch it. Rebecca Dawson, Board Two. I am here to oppose this. I know that it's been out, lots of people have talked about it and there are some really great things that have come out today. People excited about the recreational, the educational opportunities, but we live in western Montana. And we have green space, we have open space, we have trails, we have trailheads, we have park streams. We have all this available to us and pretty readily accessible without spending more money. Taxes are out of control. The people in Missoula City and county need them. And spending more of this money on a park that we don't need because we have another one is a want, not a need. It is not a necessity. It's not fair to the generations of people that have happy memories at Marshall Mountain to sacrifice their future generations being able to live here because we've taxed everybody out of it. So I strongly oppose this. Thank you for your time.
My name's Kimberly Baker. I'm with Friends of Marshall Mountain. And I have here a letter from Crystal Stonesifer from the, she's the Missoula District Ranger from the Forest Service. She's written a letter. Is it okay with you guys if I read it? Okay. Hopefully this will go fine. I haven't even pre-read it. I haven't even pre-read it. Thanks for reaching out. I've been tracking the Marshall Mountain developments very closely and the Lowell National Forest is very much in support of this and recognizes the importance of management of these lands as community open space. I'm very sorry that we won't be able to have Forest Service representation at this afternoon's meeting. From the perspective of the, of the Missoula District, having Marshall Mountain in public ownership would be a highly valuable, would be highly valuable to ensure that equitable, wide-ranging and connected recreation opportunities exist across the Missoula front country. As you mentioned, this will help address increased user demands and defray recreation pressures on public lands of all ownerships surrounding Missoula. Further, Marshall offers unique trail connectivity opportunities, connecting recreation hubs and access points in the Rouda State Corridor, the public land in the Gold Creek Drainage, and even continuing upwards toward Sealy Lake. So I would just love to say that I definitely want you guys to think about that and the, the advantage of saving this land from public, from private ownership so that we can have it accessible for our public for generations to come. And thank you for your time.
Thanks for your time. My name is Ruben Fry. I live in east Missoula and I support this acquisition fully along with all the other reasons that people mentioned with all the different types of activities and user groups and it being an inclusive area to access other public lands as well besides just this acquisition. I just want to make a comment about hunting as being part of Montana's, you know, cultural significance and sustaining yourself off of the land. And areas that we currently have that are kind of what this is supposed to be have safety zones that you're allow like, or restrict certain types of weapons or no hunting at all. And currently in the Forest Service lands, which obviously that'd be a big, up to the Forest Service to decide the management of those lands, you're allowed to use any legal weapon for the animal you're pursuing in those areas directly surrounding this property. I am fully in support of it for the property itself and the access to other areas and all the users, but I would just voice my concern about limiting a current opportunity that's allowed there. Thanks.
I'm Alan Alt. I'm running for city council, Ward Four. And like the other three people in front of me or that spoke a little while ago, I am in opposition to this. And I'm not going to go into the reasons because I agree 100% with everything they said. What I do want to stress is you people are taxing people out of their homes. The taxpayers are paying for all this. You know, the open space bond, that's taxpayer money. That's us, we're paying for that. So again, I just stress how the city, and county, is taxing people out of their homes. Thank you. Should we go to some of our online folks?
Sorry, yes, I'm still here, but I don't have anything to say.
Thank you, Matthew, appreciate that. Anybody, anybody online? Star six if you're struggling with unmuting yourself. Star five? Okay. Star five to raise your hand, star six to unmute. Or raise your hand in teams. Or just yell out your window really loudly. Yeah, is there anybody in the chat? Okay, that, on the county side, we're going to close public comment and move towards a discussion and a motion and the city can do that after us if they so choose.
So I will close the public hearing on behalf of the city of Missoula. Turn it over to the Commissioners for action. So we're closing our hearing to have a discussion and a motion. You guys have, if you want to.
I guess just to prepare for, after we have any comments, Kaylee or could someone queue up the?
Yep.
The proposed motions. So this has been the greatest view I have ever had in a public meeting. All of you are looking at a wall and us, but. I kind of wish we would have turned, turned everyone around and allowed you the opportunity to see what we've been seeing for the past couple of hours. And this is super appropriate, I think, for today's discussion in that we've heard a couple of comments earlier about Mount Jumbo, but certainly Waterworks Hill and the North Hills lie to the north and are in public ownership also. I suspect there were naysayers decades ago when it was contemplated to move these properties into public ownership, but I would hazard a guess that most of the folks in this community are glad that our predecessors took the action that they did to preserve these lands for future generations. I would also hazard a guess that for those of us sitting at the table here today, most of what we do on a daily and weekly basis, no one will ever remember. No one. Every day when I go home, just like clockwork, my high school age daughter asked me what I did that day. And that varies from we approved a number of miles for dust abatement or approved a family transfer or were sued by the state of Montana. Maybe they'll remember that, I don't know. But contemplating the acquisition of Marshall Mountain is something that I will be able to tell her later today that we did today. And I guarantee that is something she will remember and future generations of Missoulians will remember. And this is a big deal for the community. And just as, as an addendum to all of that, I will say, we've heard a number of comments about expending taxpayer dollars for this. Well, the residents and the voters of Missoula County have already weighed in on that by approving open space bonds. And so this is not something that we are unilaterally forcing down anyone's throats. This is something that Missoulians have already, and Missoula County residents have already spoken on, and to do otherwise than to use those dollars as they were intended is a misuse and I think an abdication, misuse of our office and an abdication of the authority that folks have granted us. So I will absolutely be supporting this today.
It's tough to follow Stromeyer. And again, I think Donna talked about this earlier, that this is a unique moment in time and this, the stars are aligned in such a way that we really do need to take advantage of this and the generosity and the commitment that folks have put into it. And I'm one of the few people, I don't have children here, I don't even like children. But I really, I do care about the future and the access that, what Marshall Mountain provides isn't a kind of a manicured outdoor experience. And so when we think about the development of a child and into like a complete human being, it is so very, very important that in those early years, zero to eight, zero to 12, that, that children have access to unmanicured natural spaces. And the work that you all do is, it's so vitally important to get kids out, not just on a manicured soccer field, but to be able to dig a pit, to understand how to travel in the wilderness in the winter, understand how to sleep safely at night outdoors, understand the consequences, like physical consequences of being outdoors and being in, again, this kind of unmanicured nature. Children need more opportunity to do that. And, and why? Because bad stuff is going to happen to them later in life. And if they don't have this, this solid connection, they're going to fall apart and they're going to cost us a lot of money. So having access to outdoors really will help, help their foundation and what Marshall Mountain will provide, I think, is incredibly important. And then again, what Lad was talking about, what west slope cutthroat trout, like why, why do you care? Like, why do we care about, what's the significance of this fish? And it's because it's a, it's an indicator species of clean, cold, clear, connected water. And it doesn't sound sexy, but it, it is vitally important that we have this opportunity to protect this habitat and to have educational opportunities, but also just, yes, to have this indicator species, an indication of our community's health. It's so very important. We're in the headwaters of the continent, right here in Montana, and that fish is, is part of it. Just going to ramble here, but I'm distracted by the view and we're, we're really, really darn lucky. And so, yes, I'm absolutely going to support the.
Now you got the weakest link. Of the three. So I started out in the morning, this morning, by doing that walk that I can see going right above Lad's head there. On Waterworks. That's such a mundane thing to say, it barely warrants a yawn in our community. It barely warrants a yawn because life in Missoula without Waterworks Hill, without the North Hills is kind of unimaginable. This is just part of the fabric of this place and who we are. I'm going to finish my day when we're done here at the library, getting on the bike path and riding home. Again, so boring. For me, life in Missoula without that bike path is unimaginable. It is literally part of this place. I'm going to warrant a guess, not a bet, that 30 years from now, Marshall Mountain will be the same thing. And certainly as some folks have said, well, we don't need this, we have all these places. 30 years from now, we'll need this. Our population is only going up. And ask yourself for a moment around that population, who is moving here and why? And what happens when they move here? Our economic engine is not that we have a 3M factory with thousands of jobs or four mills running 24/7. Our economic engine is the very place itself. People move here, they choose to be here because one of the things they choose for is easy access to public land and water and a vibrant culture and a downtown that's beautiful and bike paths and a university. They make the choice to be here and then create livelihoods. I can look out and see faces of people I have immense respect for who did exactly that. And there's countless more of them. This is an investment in the future, not just that space itself 30 years from now, but investing in folks who will come here and start livelihoods and nonprofits and entrepreneurship and acts of culture and sport and love and life and everything else. We're setting up the future to enjoy the type of life that we have right now. And I believe that's our supreme obligation. All right, told you weakest link.
So with that, I would move that we adopt a resolution to expend a combination of 2006 and 2018 open space bond proceeds in an amount not to exceed $1 million for the purpose of acquiring 480 acres as part of the Marshall Mountain Park Project, related transaction costs and initial capital improvements related to essential public safety and site access.
Second.
Okay, we get to call for any other public comment. So if anybody would like to speak to this that hasn't spoken yet, you're welcome to. Everybody online, yeah? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Now it's up to you.
You're free to go home.
So I will, as we close the public hearing for the city, our process is a little different, but similar. So first of all, I will go to our chair of our climate conservation and parks committee, Amber Sherrill, for a motion.
I move that we adopt a resolution authorizing the expenditure of 2018 open space bond funds in an amount not to exceed $1 million for the purpose of public acquisition of Marshall Mountain, including 480 acres consisting of the Conservation Fund, Five Valleys Land Trust and Izzy Dog LLC properties of 160 acres each. And acknowledge that said funds should, shall be used for accommodation of fee title acquisition costs matched for the grant funding and initial capital improvements related to essential public safety and access to the site. And I would like to speak to it when that's appropriate.
Sherrill, now's appropriate and I'll hand you the mic. I should have done that.
Okay, so I appreciate the comment about the best, the best time to plant a tree. I don't know who said that, but I, I think that the time is now. When I moved to Missoula 23 years ago, I was amazed at the foresight of some of our conservation leaders as well as our city leaders way back when. And I think Jumbo is a really great example of that. I want to continue to be that type of leader and I hope my colleagues do as well. I first want to thank the county for their willingness to take this amazing cornerstone into public ownership. We're really lucky at the city to have the relationship with them that we do. I also want to thank the city staff, the county staff. You know, I've been in different capacities involved in this for a long time and they have worked diligently and they have kept their eye on the prize and I really appreciate that. I want to thank Five Valleys Land Trust for the work that they have put into it over the years. It's been many, many years. The partners at Izzy Dog and the Conservation Fund. Having run the 2000 open space bond and having been involved in the polling for that, as I said, I know that the community is interested in Marshall Mountain being preserved and for it being in public ownership. And they've been interested in this for many, many years. We've heard from a lot of different groups via email and here today, user groups, birders, runners, hikers, youth camp members, cyclists, skiers and conservators. We know this property is a cornerstone, a wildlife corridor, a valued recreation area and a very needed space for camps. We have a voter approved bond to do this. A bond campaign whose three focal points were Dean Stone, Marshall Mountain and improvements to the river corridor running through town. This will, this vote today will be achieving the second of those three priorities. Like so many land acquisitions in the past, we do not know the full extent of the build out or the, have perfected the plan at this point. What we do know that is that this is something that the community values. It is something our community has voted for. It is a property our summer camps use extensively and that they need and that this is just at this point scratching the surface at what this property will be used for in the future. What's in front of us right now is the acquisition, not the management agreement, not the master plan, not the maintenance or the lease agreement. Those will come, this body will see them and possibly amend them. What is in front of us right now is the acquisition. We are being asked to decide today if we believe preserving this piece of property is in the best interest of our community and if it is in the best interest of, for future generations. Land conservation is opportunistic and this today is our opportunity. I realize with my, my sticker on the back of my computer, you probably all knew where I was going with this, but I'm clearly going to vote for this acquisition and I'm, I'm really excited that this is finally in front of us and that I'm able to do so.
Thanks. I'm kind of show of hands if council members that would like to provide comments and I'll manage the microphone a little better. Okay. So we'll just, we'll start down here and then we'll start with Mr. Carvino and then we'll just go through council members and we'll head back to this side in a moment. and we'll head back to this side in a moment.
Yeah, thanks, everybody. Um, hasn't, hasn't been just a beautiful view the whole time, but it's also been the mountains, but it's also been beautiful just seeing everybody from the community come together for this. We've gotten more comments about this project than almost anything else this year on city council. Um, and it wasn't long ago that almost all lands around us were open to the public. Before, you know, the European invasion of, of this land, um, view, uh, almost everything was open to, um, to everybody and there was very little land that was carved out just for private interests. Um, and soon enough, the US government, um, has privatized, privatized almost everything. And I think this has been a huge mistake in this country. Who should own the mountains? Who should own the rivers? I would say no one, but all of us. Um, this is a huge step forward to preserving, um, taking this opportunity to, to make sure that this land is accessed to the public, general public for generations to come. Um, in a time of great economic inequality in this country, public land is often a great equalizer where all of us have access, no matter how much money you have or means and what family you came from, all of us have access to, to walk over, um, and, you know, recreate however we like. We can go on a nice little walk, um, borrow a bike, go on a bike ride up there, um, just go lay down and watch a sunset. And I think it's really important that we create opportunities for everybody of any, of all means to be able to have that kind of opportunity. Um, so af- after this, I would normally go play chess on, on a Wednesday night, but I think today calls for a good little bike ride up on Hello Kitty and watch a sunset. So I, uh, I appreciate everybody, uh, being so interested in this topic and, and, um, I appreciate city staff who worked countless hours on this opportunity to get it in front of city council and county commissioners. And I'm happy to, to, um, to make this acquisition.
Thank you. Um, I wanna thank all of you for being here for a few hours with us and giving us your, um, feedback on this and, and for those who, um, are in support of it, but also those of you who oppose it, I, I hear you. Um, this is coming from property taxes, but in two thousand and eighteen, we chose as, as voters to tax ourselves to set aside money for an opportunity, an opportunity like this one. This is not new tax money. This is money that we have already decided as a community that we wanna invest in future generations in preserving open space. And yes, we have a lot of open space, but that's because we bought it. Um, so I do think that, um, this is a great opportunity. It's, it's a legacy that we can leave to our, um, children and their children. So that they too can say, look, we have a lot of open space. Um, I do worry about how we're going to maintain it and I think staff has heard me asked many, many, many times about the numbers. Um, and I think that, um, we are gonna have an opportunity to see how we manage this, how we develop it. Um, and we are gonna have those decision points for all of us as a community to come together and say, we are willing to, are we willing to tax ourselves further in order to develop this to its fullest potential or not? Um, whether we choose to develop it to its fullest potential or leave it as is, still require us buying it. So, um, I understand that there, there are concerns and I share those concerns about how we're going to, uh, keep going with this, what the next step is. But for now, I think it's important for us to, um, at least have the opportunity to develop this to some degree and provide this opportunity to the rest of the community. So I will be supportive.
Okay, I wasn't gonna comment, but I guess I will 'cause this is what happens when there's a room full of politicians. We all have to talk. Um, I'll be really quick though, but I just wanted to say, you know, I'm one of the kids that was lucky enough to learn how to ski up at Marshall Mountain or slide on ice, really. Um, but, uh, I think sitting in this seat, having this opportunity, it would be really selfish of me to not preserve it for the next generation. So, um, I will support it. Um, and I, I think we've overwhelmingly heard from our constituents that they are also in support of this. So my job is to represent my constituents and I plan to vote yes on this.
Thanks. Um, I'll keep it brief also. I also grew up skiing at Marshall and I've gone to many events there and some amazing field trips and I never once mountain biked there. So there's all sorts of things that happen up there. Um, I wanted to say thank you to Izzy Dog and the people who comprise Izzy Dog. Missoula is lucky to have people like this in this community because but for them stepping up when they did, we wouldn't be in this situation today. So I did not wanna overlook that, that we have some amazing people in this community who care greatly and who give greatly. So thank you. Um, to me, this is a legacy project and this is our one shot at it. Um, as I said, I grew up recreating up there. I really look at this through the lens of future generations and it is important that future generations have these opportunities that we were lucky to have grow up when we were growing up. Um, it's money, it's property tax money. We're spending that money and the state has gotta get itself sorted on property taxes. That is clear. And at some point, I'm not sure when in the future, it'll happen. But for now, we have this opportunity in front of us that's a one, once in a lifetime. And I want it, it's a million dollars for the city to expend and then we've got a couple hundred thousand in yearly basis, give or take, for maintenance over the years, which will accrue. But back in two thousand and fifteen, this community voted on a hundred and fifty-eight million dollar bond to invest in our schools and invest in our youth. To me, that is a huge value statement, that we value our children in this town and we want them to have good experiences growing up so that they contribute to this world and they are whole and they are healthy. This continues that and so I wanna put that one million dollars in the context of a hundred and fifty-eight million dollars. This community has spoken and they also spoke when they voted on the open space bond. So that's our value system and, um, we're gonna have to figure out how to make it work. So I'm happy to vote yes on this.
Thank you. We can work down this side?
Um, I, is this on? Yes, it is. Okay. Um, first of all, I just wanna thank the city and county staff who did so much hard work to put together an incredible body of work for us to, to review and consider today. Um, the engagement and the negotiations that have been done to get us to this point have just, they, it blows my mind how much work has been done on this. Um, I also wanna thank the current owners of these properties for having the foresight to, um, negotiate with the city and county on a, um, purchasing deal that will allow us to keep this space open. Um, I also wanna thank all of the people who've come in today to provide comment. Um, we have our meetings during business hours. It's really hard for people to get in here and provide comment, but you're all are here. And as one of my colleagues already said, our job is to represent and we're representing the voices of the people that came here today. Um, yesterday morning, I counted all of the emails that we had in support of, um, Marshall Mountain and yesterday it was eighty-seven. Um, as of today, it's well over a hundred. Um, and I was having a chat with one of my colleagues about how many comments we got in opposition of this purchase and I think it was two that we received through, um, city council emails. So we are definitely representing what constituents want with the purchase of this property. Um, I did not grow up in Missoula, Montana. Um, I was not fortunate enough to learn to ski on this ice hill. I learned to ski on one in Oregon. Um, but one of the things that drew me to Missoula was the fact that when I look out at all this land here, it is all open space land. It is accessible to anyone except for that little parcel over there that is about to now become a city-county acquisition in the name of Marshall Mountain. Um, open space is, um, the epitome of equity. Um, it allows anybody from any socioeconomic, um, background to enjoy land without having to fork out money to, to enjoy it. Um, and I am incredibly honored to sit on city council at a time when we are going to make a landmark decision that is gonna benefit generations to come. And I absolutely support this, um, motion to acquire this property and I'm grateful for all the work that's been put into bringing us to this point.
Um, I had a quick question before my comment. Um, sorry about that. Uh, I know that we're acquiring this with open space bond, uh, funds, but all the future maintenance, uh, for the foreseeable future, will that come out of the general fund?
No, it'll be the conservation, that stewardship levy and the park system.
Okay, thank you. Um, I, I did grow up in Missoula. Um, my husband and I both, um, learned, not really learned how to ski 'cause he's a snowboarder and I, I did ski up there. I technically learned how to ski at Discovery, but I did go skiing up there and as Sierra said, I guess slide down the ice on it. Um, one of my good friends went up there with his Boy Scout troop and his Boy Scout leader punched him out a lion in the head. So everyone, everyone from Missoula has a story about Marshall Mountain. Every generation so far does have a story about Marshall Mountain. However, um, I'm very concerned about the future maintenance of this. And as a lot of my colleagues said, that we're making this, um, reviewing this purchase as a lens for future generations and that we value our children. And I agree and I don't think that we should continually, um, continually raise property taxes so that our kids can't afford homes there. I'm a renter, I have a two-year-old and I can't afford a home here and it's only gonna get worse. We're taxing people out of our homes. And like another commenter said, we live in western Montana. I, I didn't go up to Marshall Mountain much in my teen years and I was in the woods a lot. To me, there's a lot of places to recreate. And like another commenter said, you don't need the government to tell you to recreate. You can just go do it. So I, I have a lot of folks that are in my ward and around the city who have come up to me and told me that please do not purchase Marshall Mountain. I'm already at the breaking point with my property taxes. But I'm, and I tell them to come to the public comment, but they're either nervous about it 'cause they know they're gonna go against the status quo or they say, why bother? The city council has absolutely made up their mind. So I am gonna go against the grain here. I have a feeling that it will pass today. Uh, I did wanna thank everybody for coming down, but I also am representing those constituents that did not wanna come down or those few constituents that did come up and voice their opinion even though it was against the status quo. So I do thank you all for voicing your opinion and participating in the democratic process. I love that, even if I don't agree with y'all all the time. Um, but I do not plan on supporting this.
Well, I have absolutely been amazed at how my people were in support of this. It's kinda hard to ignore that. But unfortunately, I was talking to my barber today and he said, uh, hey, don't buy it. So I'm representing my barber. You know, a couple of things, I know that there was a bond issue a while ago and Marshall Mountain was on it and everybody went for it. Like, yeah, let's do it. It sounds great. And a lot of times, things sound great until they become a little bit more clearer. And I think being on city council for a while, I have learned a lot about the city and how the, the city is run and how complicated it is. It's not simple. It's a very deep pool. But it's also allowed me to see a little bit further down the road. Um, that's a great place, there's no two ways about it. Um, but I'm also looking at the cost of it. Not right now, a million bucks, that's nothing. Uh, some of the maintenance money, that's a little concerning. And also, how much is this going to cost us later on? I really don't believe that the amount of money coming in from people recreating up there and renting and things like that will pay for all of the maintenance. So I do have some concerns, so I won't be in support of this today.
Okay. Hi. Um, I must be the one person in the room who's never stepped foot on Marshall Mountain. Just gonna freely admit that. Um, I, growing up in Montana, by the time I got to college here, I was super stoked to go skiing and then it closed. So I missed my opportunity, um, growing up in Kalispell and I missed all the opportunities to go see there. Uh, but, um, I have had the chance to get to know Meg Witcher and the work that the Missoula Parks and Rec does. And I did get a chance to learn how to cross-country ski during the pandemic and I do think that that probably saved my mental health. And I also, uh, voted for the open space bond in two thousand and eighteen as a Missoula resident and voter, um, knowing what that meant, that I was freely saying, yes, I'm willing to pay a little bit more in taxes to allow for a pool of funds to be set aside for acquisition of open space. And I also voted for the stewardship levy, knowing that, uh, once you buy it, you gotta maintain it. And so we and the voters of Missoula have agreed to tax ourselves a tiny bit more to create a pool of funds to maintain the open space lands that we have acquired and other generations and leaders before us have acquired. So, um, I was talking with a constituent and they at first said, well, I'm concerned about Marshall Mountain. And then I explained to them that the funds was coming out of the open space bond fund and the maintenance portion of it, a good part of it could come from the levy. Um, and they were like, oh, I didn't know that. Okay, cool, you should do it then. Um, so I'm representing my constituent. But I also think that the, um, other interesting component of this particular property that makes me a little bit more comfortable, I've shared many of the concerns that Ms. Becerra, we've been in the same meetings and peppering Donna and Morgan with a million questions and thank you for patiently walking us through all of that and answering all of our questions and giving us all those numbers, that there's opportunity for revenue creation at this space and it is very unlike any of the other open spaces that we have acquired. So those will be tough conversations because there's multiple user groups, um, who are gonna say, no, you can't shut it down for this reason or you can shut it down for that reason. And I think that we all need to kinda come with an open mind for those conversations because, um, there is a point, and I do think that we're there, that, um, continuing to go to the well of general tax dollars when it is getting to be incredibly hard and people in our community are feeling like they can no longer afford to live here and they worry about future generations. So when we have those conversations about the usage, mindful that, yes, we did have the foresight to set aside some money with the stewardship levy, but we're also gonna have to make that stretch. And with this particular property, there's opportunities for revenue for various things. So, um, that is my ask. I will do the right thing by you all, uh, by supporting this as this is what, um, this was intended by. And in exchange, I hope that when we have those conversations, you guys can all join us in being, uh, solution-oriented and creatively thinking about how we can continue to maintain this incredible asset for the generations to come, mindful that there are people amongst our community who are feeling that this is no longer a welcoming community because they can no longer afford to live here. So, um, with that, I will be supporting. Pass the mic to the mic. The mic to Mike.
All right. Um, thank you all, I appreciate everybody's comments. You know, there was a, a public commenter who won't be named, who suggested that everybody who learned to ski at Marshall Mountain has more hair than he does and is a charter leader in the young balding alums of the Marshall Ski School. I'm a great event. You know, I'm a, I'm a firm believer in, in listening to the people. And there have been a lot of great comments about why we should do this. And there have also been some very valid points about the stress that people are feeling, taxpayers in Missoula. And I think what's important to, to kinda delineate here is the, the decisions that the voters have made have already occurred. And so the, the purchase money is coming from a bond that has already been voted on, that decision's been made. This, the maintenance money is coming from the stewardship fund that was voted on in two thousand and eighteen. Those decisions have already been made. I think the point that's, that people are making around property taxes is valid and it, it's something that as we all wear so many different hats in these roles, we need to keep in mind for future bonds. Because I would agree that we have solved a lot of big, big problems and done a lot of tremendously incredible things in Missoula by going to the voters and saying, hey, we have one more thing. So I think that all of that can be true at the same time. Right now, our job as public leaders is to evaluate the opportunity in front of us based on money the voters in Missoula have already said they want to spend. And Missoula has believed in conservation so much that when the money was spent the first time, we went back out to voters and asked, you wanna do it again? And the voters overwhelmingly said yes. So to me, that is not just a one-time direction, but that is a multi-generational instruction to us that this money's been set aside by voters and they want us to conserve. We have the opportunity to conserve this space. That's a separate conversation than what the future uses are. And I think that, um, several of my colleagues have kinda got at that. We could conserve it and do the, the bare minimum to protect it each year. We don't have to let it grow, we don't have to do other things. Those are conversations that when opportunities arise, this council, these commissioners or our, our, you know, the people who follow us down the road are going to have to make those decisions. But that's not why we're discussing that. Right now, all we are discussing is the acquisition and where that money is coming from. And so I will be in support of this. And Ms. Savage.
Thank you. I just wanted to say briefly thank you again to city and county staff for all of the hard work that you have put in over the last, I mean, number of years really, to bring this to where it is today. I am voting in support of this for a few reasons. One is I do agree that it is a legacy vote. It will be something that I look back on my time as city council, and will be proud to have been a part of it. Number two, I'm voting for this because of Missoula's kids, frankly. I feel like Parks and Rec uses this land in such an important way. My kids have certainly benefited from that over the years. And I think that it is important that we do preserve Marshall Mountain. I'd also like to say a thank you to Izzy Dog for stepping in. I agree, we need more people like you in our community. And I will say that I do look forward to discussing management plans. I hope that we can look at those through a lens of equity and make sure that there are more than, you know, a few users represented in those. I know there's are conversations that happen later, but I do just want to say that those have been mostly where most of my concerns have been, and I hope that those can be addressed as we move forward. But today, we're talking about purchase, and I am in support. Thank you.
Thank you all for your comments. Thank you, members of the public, for your engagement in this process. This has been our most engaged, this has been the project that has received the most engagement via our online engagement platform. We've received more comments on this than anything else, and I think it's a testament to the community interest, and it's a testament to the fact that Missoula is a community that cares about people and about place. And that's what I've heard today, is an outpouring of people caring about each other and people caring about this place that we call home. There are a number of folks that have been thanked. I will reiterate those thanks briefly. Thanks to the county for being a great partner in this and so much other work. Thanks to our staff, both city and county staff, working on the acquisition side and on the program side. Meg, congratulations on 10 years. It is appall worthy. And I would be remiss if I didn't thank the landowners that have generously participated in this and brought this forward and been really wonderful partners along the way. This is a philanthropic effort on the part of those landowners in donating a major portion of the value of that land, and that is, we're really lucky to have private partners in the community that can step in and be nimble when government can't be. And speaking of being not very nimble, we have a lot of process, and that's really important. That is something that allows us to approach acquisitions like this with multiple generations in mind, as has been mentioned. We can't make that decision on the timeline of a private real estate deal. And so that is why this partnership with private entities and entities like Five Valley Land Trust is so important, and the Conservation Fund as well. Part of our process involves the Open Lands Committee at the county and the Open Space Advisory Committee over on the city side, and those citizen advisory groups, along with the park board and other citizen groups, are a group of local experts who volunteer their time to vet the projects that staff bring forward. It is thorough work. They ask good questions, they engage thoroughly, and when a recommendation comes to us from one of these boards or commissions, I'm confident in how thorough that recommendation has been vetted. I'm confident that it is in the best interest of our open space system and our local governments when those come forward. This time, we also had the opportunity and the pleasure of working with tribes, and was really pleased to sit in a meeting at Marshall Mountain with the elders committee discussing this property, some of the history of it, and some of the opportunities of it moving forward, and I'm grateful for that government-to-government relationship with our tribal neighbors. There have been very few things in my 10 years on city council and in local government that have been as rewarding as procuring open space, with the possible exception of acquiring our water system in perpetuity. And I think there are very few things that will have a more meaningful lasting impact on our community, and so I'm proud to be part of this. And I don't get to vote, but I am pleased with the headwinds of this and look forward to recreating up there for decades to come. And with that, we can have a roll call vote. Ms. Ray, mine.
Okay, on the resolution authorizing cities expenditure, Anderson.
Yes.
Becerra.
Yes.
Carlini.
Yes.
Montos.
No.
Permer.
Yes.
Ari Suckers. Jones.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
Nugent.
Yes.
Savage.
Yes.
Cheryl.
Yes.
Take it a minute, I'm going to wait for the minutes. The seat guy.
No.
And would any of you like to change your vote? That is nine eyes and two names.
And the resolution is approved. And on behalf of the city, I will adjourn the city council meeting. I want to thank you all for your attendance and for your service to our community. We're done from the county side.